We on? I'd like to call to order the special selectment meeting of Monday, December 15th, 2008. If you could just rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Just to bring the viewers at home up to date, the special meeting tonight is to interview three finalists for the town manager position. This board met in executive session and interviewed six potential candidates out of a list of about thirty applicants and arrived at three finalists. Mass General Law dictates that once you have a list of finalists, that the rest of the process plays out in open session. So we're here tonight to interview three candidates for an hour each, and then we'll kind of lay out the rest of the process moving forward. Probably will be moving forward after the holidays are over here, but wanted at least get the next round of interviews out of the way here. So with that, I would invite Mr. Glenn Fratto to join us. Is someone over here, Glenn? Now Glenn, obviously the four of us in Selectman Destleto will be here in a few minutes have met you before, but I'd like you to maybe just take a few minutes, introduce yourself to the town, and you know, tell us, remind us again why you're here, a little bit about your background, and you know, then tell the folks in the town, you know, why you want to be their next town manager.
Thank you. First, I need my thanking the board for inviting me back for the second round. Appreciate the honor. People of Oxbridge, my name's Glenn Fratto, and my entire career, except for one year, has been engaged in public service. I come from a family where people are police officers, schoolteachers, firemen, Public Works employees, and that's something that we were ingrained in us since I was a child. I had been a town manager in Westford, Massachusetts, town manager in Wyndham, Maine, and interim administrator in Kittery, Portsmouth, and Wyndham before I took the full-time job. I've also been a school business administrator. I am a licensed school business administrator, and that's something I've done for most of the last decade, primarily in charter public schools in the Boston public school area. I have a very fortunate education. I was a high school football player and had the good fortune of going to a very good college, and from there, a wonderful graduate school. I'm before you today, looking to get back into the town manager's career path. I thought this is something I'd be doing my entire career, and it took a slight turn when I left the town of Westford a little over ten years ago. This time, I'm ready to get back into the field. My two sons are in college, my personal life is much better situation, and if I can impress upon this board that I'm a good candidate, I hope you'll give me serious consideration.
Okay. What we're gonna do is each Selectman will ask two questions. We're gonna try to ask similar questions to each of the candidates, and then, once we get through, you know, a round of questions from each of us, then we'll just kind of open it up and have more of a free-form conversation, so. Peter's gonna lead off.
Sure. It's not unusual in towns to have some tension between the quote "town" side and the "school" side. That was the situation in Oxbridge up until four, three or four years ago. We have a good relationship now, and you have a school background, so it'll be easier for you to cope with both sides because you have some experience in both sides. But can you give us some idea of the relationship between the town side and the school side and the inevitable competition for resources?
It's no secret that all town departments and schools, including the school department, buy for a limited resource, and that's municipal dollars. And especially in times like we have now and will have in the next few years, it's extremely important that all parties understand where each comes from and what service each provides. I'm no stranger to the tensions between a school committee and a board of selectmen or town council. In fact, when I was the town manager in Wyndham, Maine, it was the more, the highlights of the year for the people watching cable TV was the battles between the school committee and town council on cable television, and who could, you know, prove they were the strongest. But that's, they understood that that was a disservice to the community, and eventually in Wyndham, Maine, we came up with a formula to drive the both municipal and school budgets. I won't go into detail, it's, if you Google me, you'll find it called "expenditure control budgeting." But the bottom line was, when you prepare budgets, if you can understand upfront the resources that are gonna be allocated to each department, so you can build a budget based on available resources. From Wyndham, I went to Westford, where I had the opportunity to work with a very long-tenured school superintendent, and where I learned that even if you provide the largest percentage increase in the history of the school department, you can still have a headline that says "Town Manager Slashes School Budget." Because even though I provided a double-digit increase one year, the word was that I had slashed the school budget. That was because the budget that was proposed by the school committee was 6% more than the budget that I ultimately recommended to town meeting. I can tell you that I'm a facilitator and mediator, that's part impossible, coming from a large Italian family. And I think my best work is work with the finance committee. The finance committees have to stretch both municipal and the school department, determine where resources should be allocated. When I left Westford, I decided I wanted to work in public schools. I mean, that's something that's always been important to me. I was very fortunate, coming from a public school system, getting an opportunity to go to an Ivy League college. So I decided that I wanted to be a licensed school business administrator, and that's something I did for pretty much the next decade. So I do understand from both sides, the pressure's borne from lack of resources, but I certainly can understand where the school business administrator and the school superintendent and teachers are coming from in regard to how available resources. I understand how the funding system works, and perhaps that makes me different from other candidates, but been there, done that on both sides.
Just to bring Bruce up to speed, since Bruce just was able to join us. The process we're gonna follow tonight, Bruce, is each Selectman will ask two questions of each candidate, preferably the same two questions, we'll have, you know, a common comparison, and then, once we get through the regular questions, then we'll open up to some more free-form questions. Peter started off by asking question number three from the list of questions that I provided to you. Okay. So you wanna go one each, or do you wanna do two?
Yeah, me too.
Okay. Carrie, why don't you ask one minute?
I'm gonna ask you, it's called a transition question. What problems do you anticipate in making the transition to the position of the town
Given that, I understand that the charter requires the town manager to reside in the town within a year. I'm not sure how, does it say that anymore?
No, it does not.
I don't read that. Very good. My fiance, my fiance lives 8.5 miles from Oxbridge, so the whole issue of transition from a physical standpoint will not be an issue. There won't be any requests for funding to relocate. Now, that's something that's very easy. I spend a lot of the time in Milford, anyway. Transitioning, it's actually, it's a period of excitement, just like when you began school when you were young, if you liked going to school, which I did. You're getting to know people, and getting to know the five members of this board, getting to know the officials in the school department, getting to know the department heads and the municipal side, and learning as much as I can before I'm put in a position where I have to stop making decisions. That, you know, my favorite expression, one of my favorite expressions is from Abe Lincoln. When told, when asked how he would chop wood, he had three hours to chop wood, he said he'd spend two hours sharpening the axe. And that's the most efficient way to do things. Be prepared, have the right tools, and then make the decisions.
Mike?
Yes, working with the Board of Selectmen, how would you intend to establish priorities and adhere to them?
Priorities for the town manager? Well, priorities are established by the Board of Selectmen. I mean, they're the policymakers. And I would think that my performance would be based on directives provided by the Board of Selectmen. Priorities coming into office, it's, you know, going through the proper chain of command, you know, any initial contact without need to go through the chairman. And I've learned that the best way to provide information to any individual selecting is to make sure that it's provided to all five selecting, that no individual gets preferential treatment, same information is provided to everybody.
Bruce?
Yes, Glenn, I'm sorry I'm late, but I'm here. Have you read a charter or a bylaw by any chance?
I thought I read most of the charter, I guess I missed the...
Okay, do you have any observations or care to make any comment about charter?
No.
Okay.
I wasn't concerned with anything that I, when I perused it. Is there anything you'd like me to talk about?
No, I have my own opinions, but I'll keep down to myself.
Why don't you share them right now?
But to surprise you with it later.
That's all right, that's all right.
Glenn, you mentioned you've got a pretty strong athletic background, and in some cases you get to pick your team, in other cases, you inherit a team. You're gonna inherit most of your team here. So what's your process to go about assessing the strengths and abilities of the various departments and the various teammates that you're gonna be playing with?
Well, what I like to do is spend time face-to-face, and I learned long ago that the best way to understand department heads is by getting in their vehicle and driving the town. You get to learn about the municipality, you also get to learn a lot about the person you'll be working with. You know, with the Public Works Director, driving through the community, understanding the snow routes and where the gravel pits are, et cetera. Same thing with the police chief, the fire chief, and getting to know those individuals. I'd also like to work with the code, the human resources files, and see what evaluations have been done on them to understand. Also do a review of whatever articles have been in the local newspapers that discuss the performance, even though it may be viewed from the ones writing the newspaper article. And then talking, you know, interviewing them, having them sit in my office or their office, and telling me what they do to better understand. And a lot of that discussion will end up engaged in preparing the budgets. And I would need to understand where all the money is being spent, and that's something that department heads will need to explain to me.
Peter, second question?
Back on fiscal issues, coming up with Kevin's question. You mentioned earlier about, you know, fiscal constraints and budgets, departments wanting more resources than might be available, and that's the board's priority too, as is the town manager's priority. So how do you go about allocating resources that where the total resources are less than the total requests? What's your underwriting philosophy, overriding philosophy?
I don't mean to take an easy way out here, but that's the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen, is making the policy decision as to what the priorities are for spending funds. I would make sure that the funds were spent in the most efficient manner possible, but I don't think it's appropriate just for one person to make the decision that the libraries will get only a 2% cut as opposed to the police that make the cuts and et cetera. I can tell you that I, that every budget that I have ever presented to a town meeting, and I've presented either eight or nine times, a full budget to town meeting in Westford and Wyndham, and to the penny, every budget was adopted as proposed by the town manager. And both those communities, it was called a strong town manager form of government, so it was the town manager's budget that was originally presented to town meeting, then the other boards would have an opportunity to speak on the budget, whether it's the finance committee, the school committee, the Board of Selectmen or Town Council. And those budgets were vetted before they went to town meeting. And I think great resources you have in most communities are the unsung heroes that serve on finance committees, that love running numbers and love getting into the nitty-gritty. That's something I love to do, roll up my sleeve and get into the budgets. So I can tell you that any funding that I would propose would be an efficient use of available resources. But what a lot of departments, a lot of people have to understand now is because of Propulsion Two and a Half and the limits that we face in the state of Massachusetts, there is no panacea, there's no easy way to raise additional revenue, and you have to find ways to spend available resources as efficiently as possible, and try and find creative ways to generate other income, whether it's the grants encouraging new economic development, there are other ways to fund a budget, if you get corporate sponsors, if you have large corporations in the community, or have benefactors that are willing to work with you. But the tax dollar is not the way you're gonna be able to fund major projects unless you do it through a tax override. And that's something that we're, the school committee and Board of Selectmen will absolutely need to be on task, on target, and on the same page when you go for any tax overrides, especially given the financial situation this town and other towns face, but particularly this town.
Karen?
Since you have been a town manager and prior experience, and I assume that you were evaluated by those boards in the past, what process should the Board of Selectmen use to evaluate you here as town manager?
Well, whether it's myself or any of the other individuals that have applied, I did notice that this board is doing the recruiting and evaluation and hiring a new town manager on the room, so you're saving money not hiring a $15,000 to $25,000 consultant. So I assume you do the same thing when you have evaluations, that you're gonna find a prepared format for evaluations. A lot of communities have already done this, the Mass Municipal Association has standardized contracts. And I think what you need, what I would recommend you do is, for the benefit of whoever sits in this chair, is they need to understand what they'll be evaluated on, what their goals and objectives are. And those can be ten, those can be twenty objectives, and then you have to have a criteria on whether or not the person's being those objectives. It all should be based on performance. And I understand a lot of places where politics may get involved, or performance may not be based on merit, may be based on other considerations, but the more you can base an evaluation on performance as was outlined in advance, the better it is for the entire community, but particularly the town manager.
Peter?
How would you describe your approach to labor-management relations in the municipalities where you worked?
I'm very fortunate in that regard. I think it's just by my makeup, who I am. My very first job in municipal governance was right out of college. I worked for a town manager in my hometown of Arlington, Mass., which was Donald Markey. And Don just had this routine of anyone he would hire as an assistant, and he had dozens and dozens of us over the years, he would let them sit in the back and watch labor negotiations. So for two years, I got to watch him negotiate with the police, with the fire departments, et cetera. And, you know, get a visceral understanding of what the process is like. That coupled with the fact that I'm the oldest son of five siblings, and being a facilitator in that regard helped me. I can tell you, nobody likes the idea of negotiating negotiations, 'cause you just think it's gonna be a battle royal. But the more I did it, and I've negotiated with police unions, fire unions, administrator unions, nurses' unions, corrections officer unions, teachers' unions, I've run the gamut. And I can tell you that the longer you do it, the more you understand that when you shake hands at the beginning of a negotiation session, that you're trying to come to consensus. As long as both sides are being reasonable, you will reach consensus. I've never had a contentious negotiations, 'cause you know when you walk in the door, what's acceptable. I mean, one department's not gonna get significantly more or less than any other department. In times of fiscal distress, there may not be considerations of raises. That's something that needs to be negotiated, but it all has to be equity, because, trust me, every department knows what the other departments get. And it has to be fair. And I think mutual respect, you don't go in pounding the table, you go in with the understanding that you're gonna be able to work something out. I will tell you a story that I shared with you at our last discussion. One morning, when I came into my office in Wyndham, excuse me, Westford, Mass., my secretary, who was no longer my secretary within a week after the Cincinnati, told me they had a negotiating session with my department heads. Didn't forewarn me, wasn't on my calendar. When I went across the street, it was at the library meeting room, I came into a room that was actually set up similar to this, there were the department heads on both sides of the table, all the way around, the police chief and fire chief with that, they ended the table. There was an empty seat here, and sitting here was somebody I hadn't met yet, and I thought I had met all the department heads. And when I asked him who he was, he says, oh, he introduced himself as the town's legal counsel, that he was there to help the town manager negotiate the contract with the administrators. Well, if that's how it always been done, it changed soon as I met him. I thanked him for coming and asked him to leave. But I don't need an attorney to negotiate contracts. You may want to have an attorney peruse any final settlement before you work on it, but you don't need someone sitting there, you know, billing you $150, $200 an hour you negotiate. And it also doesn't set a good tone with the employees, that when you're trying to work together, that you're spending money trying to keep them from agreeing on it. That money's better spent giving it to them rather than paying an attorney. But I've been negotiating for decades. It's something I do well, it's something I actually enjoy, 'cause when you can reach consensus, and you can shake hands at the end of the negotiating session, you know you've done your job.
Yeah. If employed by the town of Oxbridge as town manager, how would you suggest that you and the Board of Selectmen establish a good working relationship?
I think the relationship the board has amongst the five of you is an indicator of the relationship you'll have with the town manager, that you all need to get along, that you all determine that you're going in the right direction, and that you all have the same objectives. And I think the relationship you will have with each other is a reflection of how the relationship you'll have with the town manager. You make sense from the hour we spent before, and maybe the time we'll spend today, that I tend to be an upbeat person, I, you know, I'm a happy guy, I enjoy coming to work, I enjoy my interactions with others. And that's something I would not lose coming to Oxbridge. And it's just, I mean, I've seen, when I was in Wyndham, Maine, the members of the school committee and town council despised each other, absolutely despised each other. But when you spend time together, sitting in a room trying to reach consensus on this budget format, you get to learn about other people, and that maybe they're not the assumptions that you made. I can, I'm sure that the five of you, you wanna make this community run as efficiently and effectively as possible, and that's why you're here. Hopefully, you hired an administrator that has that same objective, and that we can, you know, move forward. The analogy I used last, the last time we met was, I'm a quarterback, though I may not look it, I'm the quarterback, you're the coaches. My department heads are the other players, and I need to make sure that we do the best we can on the field. But you provide us the plays, you provide us the direction, and we'll implement what you've told us to do.
Glenn, describe your greatest accomplishment in the public sector, and how it came to be, what you specifically did to kind of facilitate it, make it happen, wherever the case may be.
Actually, Mike, what I'm most proud of is something that didn't happen, I mean, was 50/50, got some of it, didn't get some of it, so I'd rather use that. In Wyndham, Maine, there were a number of issues that the community was facing, and one of them, there was no wastewater treatment facility in the community. Even though it's a rural community, there was still a need in some areas to have wastewater treatment. Also, St. Joseph's College in Standish was just looking, bursting at the seams, but they couldn't build any more residential rooms for its students because they didn't have the capacity from the subject services. They were very much interested in garnering a wastewater treatment facility. Now, we're also trying to attract taxable property values that didn't put kids in the school system. That's very simple, the more property taxes you can generate without adding to the student enrollment, the better it is for the community. And working with some folks that I was put in touch with, some, actually, folks I'd worked with when I was in Kittery, when we created a tax increment financing district to provide sewage to Route One in Kittery, something that, one of my projects. We're trying to do something similar up in Wyndham, but the proposal was to build an environmentally themed industrial park with a tax increment financing district. And the centerpiece of this park would be a gas-fired power plant, working with Chimbo Corporation, 'cause the power line, the line went right through the town, but also working, building, using the taxes that we generated from this new development to bring in wastewater treatment. At the same time, we would use the excess heat generated at the power plant, you know, working with some folks, there's a lot of excess steam that you can use for greenhouses. And working with the Portland Water District, they had a big parcel of land that we were focusing on. So trying to figure out how that would be done, I worked with our legislator, and we went to Augusta, and we talked to some folks, some of the legislative, the powerful legislators, and we came up with something called the Jobs Bond, where the state, the state of Maine would put up, and this, I was part of the negotiations, if you want, put people to work quickly, towns want, have money that they wanna spend to put projects together, why don't you give communities a certain amount of time to start projects, to put people to work, and split the bill 50/50? So you basically get 50% grant. And the town of Wyndham, having been involved in putting the legislation together, we made very quick, made ace in getting proposals to town meeting to expand our library, build a new fire department, and create a tax increment financing district. It was very complicated, but we, the highest-rated project in the Jobs Bond grant was our tax increment financing district, and I wanted that badly. That would be a centerpiece.
What's it called?
Taxicrement Financing District. Basically, you're pledging taxes from new development to pay for the infrastructure that would attract that development.
The town usually have BJ's and other checks.
And we'd used it, we'd used it in Wyndham to do part of the North Corridor, just below Sebago Lake. So same vote where the state approved the Job Bond, and all the projects got approved, our tax increment financing district got disapproved at the Wyndham Town Meeting. There's a lot of misinformation, and something you learn, that people oppose anything new. A lot of people oppose something if they don't understand it, and they just didn't understand.
That's human nature, I think.
But it was such a good project, and it just didn't go forward.
Peter?
Can you give us a couple or three examples of structural changes, either in organization or policy changes or personnel changes that you've made in towns that were beneficial to the organization or operation?
In Wyndham, Maine, we had a volunteer fire department and volunteer rescue squad that did not get along.
They were separate?
They were separate. We brought them together. It took a while, because the rescue squad said that if they would try to combine the two departments, they would quit. And my predecessor had tried to do it, they threatened to walk, and he pulled back the proposal. So I made sure that before we made the proposal, that there were enough people lined up to take over the rescue, the volunteer squads. And so we ended up creating a department, a lot of people quit, a lot of people came back, you know, their slots were filled by firemen from Portland that happened to live in the town. firemen from Portland that happened to live in the town. And we created a wonderful department, so that's one, bringing that together.
How many people were involved in each of those?
There were high teens were members of the rescue squad. There were more members of the rescue squad than there were the fire department. But, you know, they weren't really volunteers, they got paid per run.
Stipends?
Stipends, yeah. They got paid per run. In, in Westford, created a pay classification plan for department heads. We moved from part of negotiations, we ended up creating a pay classification plan, that would determine what the pay scales would be for each departmental position, based on experience and other criteria. And in Boston Renaissance Charter Public School, I came on board when the school, the board of trustees were working with an educational management organization, and convinced them to fire the management organization and allow me to create a new organization plan that included human resource department, finance department, et cetera. So creating from scratch, an organizational plan to run a, at the time, about $18,000 school department.
Can I give you another one? We can skip if you're happy.
I got one of mine. It's not one of the ones on the sheet. In your opinion, Glenn, who has the primary responsibility to manage all the street acceptances, in your opinion?
To manage the street acceptances?
Yes.
Do you have a public works department head, and they don't have, you're probably, you're someone who knows whether the roads have been built properly? Do you have a town engineer?
No.
No.
Do you have a public works director that's an engineer?
Nope.
Do you have a consultant on board that could come in and evaluate whether or not the project's done?
I know I ask this question.
Not me.
I didn't, I didn't.
There are certain standards that roads are supposed to be constructed to. And you have to be independent.
I'm just asking, who has the responsibility to manage, to make sure they get accepted?
Oh, well, I assume these aren't new projects, new subdivisions. How many roads you got? Well, that's, that's always, always a thorny issue. In Wyndham, Maine, it was Sebago Lakes, it was the Lakes region, there were small roads everywhere. And I can't, you may have learned in the hour and a half, hour and forty minutes we spent together, I try to simplify things. And when I was in Wyndham, there are three types of roads. There are public roads, there are private roads, and there are private ways. Private roads, you can't touch, it's somebody else's property. Private way means the public can access it, but it's, it's not, the town doesn't own the land. And private ways need to build to a certain standard, there are two different standards. One is so that we'll plow it, and the other one so that we'll consider accepting it. And there are standards, and those standards have to be met. And it's unfortunate that if you have people who live on roads, that they want the town to take over, the town shouldn't be investing public funds in roadways that the town doesn't own. But the town can expend funds, in my personal opinion, to provide, to make sure that there's access for emergency vehicles and access by the residents, if the roads are maintained to certain condition where you can get a plow up and down the road.
Okay. Mike, again?
Yeah. I think we may have hit on it the last time. We're required, or you're going to be required by the charter, to provide efficient, effective, and economical government for the town of Oxbridge. Oftentimes, when we start talking about increasing efficiencies or effectiveness, we then bump against the notion that that might be impacting the work environment, and therefore it requires negotiation, and perhaps some additional.
Additional compensation?
Additional compensation in the process. So, do you see a natural tension between efficiency and effectiveness on one side, and economy on the other?
I read the Boston Globe, so I know that there are tensions built in. You know, certain professional personnel believe they should be provided additional stipends in order to use a computer. But if that's the most efficient way for them to do their job, that's something they should want to learn how to do. And I think the employees in the community should have the same goal, to provide efficient, resourceful services. I mean, if someone needs skills to do their job, I'm not sure you should have to pay them to get those skills. I mean, it's another thing if you require, if you have police officers or firemen, that you want to get their paramedic license and maintain that license. That's something different than learning a basic skill, like using a computer. But everything's negotiable. And what I've learned, and I don't think I've learned, is that if employees are happy, the more amenable to working with you to come to some resolution in the contract negotiations. If they think they have been not treated properly in the past, there are regrets they need to get over, or you're not going to reach consensus, that is. Am I going too fast with my?
No, no.
Yeah. What made you decide to want to apply for the position, Karen?
A couple of reasons. One is, it's, it's within a certain distance from where my fiancee lives. I'm not about to commute, and I'm not about to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars to buy new house, I'm just not in that position right now. So looking at concentric circles from two locations, Arlington, Mass., and Milford. Another reason is that you're closer to the size of Wyndham, Maine, than Westford, Mass. And I had, there was, I guess there's a certain tenor about a community, based on its population, its square, its area, what makes up a community. I'm back here right now for the second interview, because I actually really enjoyed the last time we met. I hope you enjoyed it a little bit, and that's why you invited me back. But I enjoyed the banter and the interaction that went back and forth. Most of us will sit here and say, I like, I like the challenge. Challenge makes things interesting. You get some real challenges ahead of you. But as I always tell department heads who are involved in construction projects, like, you know, when I was administrator, county administrator in New Hampshire, we were building a new jail. And the guy who ran the jail says, when is this project going to be over? Because I'm, he's there all the time, watching construction. Or a police chief's just saying, I'm tired of spending 10 hours a week with the contractors, going over change wards. And he says, someday the project will be done, and you'll be very proud to have been part of it. Oxbridge will get through this. And it might be five years, it might be 10 years, but at some point, you'll feel very good.
This being the, just economic malaise?
Economic malaise, yeah. Well, there are others you want to talk about?
Well, you know, that. In addition to, you know, the Board of Selectmen, FinCom, school committee, et cetera, there are many other volunteer, you know, boards and committees. And do you have any thoughts on, on how to, you know, encourage people, you know, to take on more volunteers and get more people involved? You know, typically is, you know, if we have a committee, there's supposed to be five people, and there's a resignation, we may get one, if we're lucky, applicant, you know, to fill that. And we don't necessarily always have people to choose from, you know, when staffing, you know, volunteer committees. And do you have any thoughts on how to increase volunteerism?
I wouldn't be in charge of these commissions, like Conservation Commission, they have their own charge.
Well, I mean, there are some that are, that are appointed by the town manager, and there are others that are appointed by the Board of Selectmen. But I just mean, just in general terms, relative to volunteers, any thoughts on?
Well, in, in the last two communities I managed, it was very clear to me that one of the most efficient, effective resources you have is people who volunteer to serve the community. You know, people work in those communities that you don't have to pay, that are pushing the community forward. Whether it's applying for grants from the state, whether it's looking at, you know, doing, purchasing, you know, conservation land in cooperation with the state. You know, you need other bodies and people who have similar interests working in that regard. In both of the last two communities I managed, we put together a volunteer night once a year. And it may sound like a very simple little thing, but once a year, we would rent a hall, whether it's the Sons of Italy, whether it's KFC. Usually, the halls donated, you know, they make their income on selling beer and wine or liquor. You have local restaurants donate food, and other people would bring potluck stuff. But getting 100 to 150 people together, you not only have the people on the committees who get to come, but they bring their spouses. And that's one thing that you could never anticipate, you know, your spouses. I'm not sure how often you get a chance to meet one another, but if you do it in a relaxed setting, where you get to, you know, share a meal, and get to talk, it increases camaraderie, esprit de corps, whatever it is. And those things have were phenomenally well-received, and it inspires other people to get involved. Another thing is that when you have someone resign, sometimes you have members of that board who want to get someone that thinks exactly like them to apply. And sometimes you can get boards that are too opinionated in one direction or the other. This town has some challenges ahead. I mean, getting the community on board for any potential school projects that you have going, any potential tax overrides, that's a perfect opportunity, I'm at town meetings, to show people what other volunteers are doing, and ask them if they can make their contribution. I mean, if you're not asking for their tax, maybe you can ask for some of their time. I know that, I'm not sure you can do it here, but in Maine, we could also offer senior citizens, if they could volunteer some time, they can get some money taken off of their property.
We do have a work ethic.
Okay. Those are small things you can do.
Any other questions? Peter, Ken?
Let me just clarify something. Under the charter, the town manager makes almost all appointments. The planning board, zoning board, conservation commission, seal of waste and measures, the all the spectacles and so forth, yeah.
Public assets.
Or state with contract. So, there are a lot of appointments made by the town manager. Under the charter, the town manager is an active, but non-voting participant of the Board of Selectmen's meetings.
Yes, yes.
Some town managers take a deferential view, because they take their cue from the board, and are not eager to advance.
Their opinions?
Others take the other view. What are your thoughts on that?
I'm not a wallflower. In putting your packets together, I'm not sure how you do it now, but usually it's the town manager puts all packets together. Agendas are put together by the chairman and the town manager, I'm not sure if that's how it's done. But the agenda drives most of the discussion that occurs, in providing supplemental material. In my history, usually when, if an issue requires a decision, I'll give my two cents. You know, I recommend this, I do not recommend this, and I'll explain why. I understand I don't have a vote, but I will, I'm very willing to explain why. Another thing, I'm not sure I noticed you doing this, I know you have, but do you ever have workshops?
We do.
Okay, you just sit around a table?
Usually are nights.
Yeah, thank you. That's when a lot of the work gets done. I mean, you can just sit around a table and talk, and not have to, you know, necessarily play to the camera. But, you know, just.
No, it's a thing, it's a workshop. There are only two kinds of meetings recognized in the state law, open meetings and executive session meetings.
Workshops are open to the public?
Yes.
They don't necessarily have to be televised?
That's true, they don't have to. No meeting has to be televised.
No meeting has to be.
Right.
We do try to televise even, even our workshops.
Okay. But still, even a workshop that's televised, it gives you an opportunity to sit across, rather than sitting, looking to the crowd, the camera, sitting around a table talking a lot. Makes a big difference. Because I get to see all of you, you not necessarily get to see one another as you're talking.
Right.
Maybe if you just shifted the tables a little bit.
But we have a better situation.
Yeah, we have a horseshoe shave upstairs.
Oh, that's right, that's right, this is, okay, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we do have a horseshoe shave table.
We stand these guests here.
We got bumped, well, no.
That showed, we got thawed.
We've got about seven minutes left. Do either of you have any other questions?
Your first take on a town budget, how deeply do you peer into it? Do you get into a zero-based budgeting approach and try to find out, why are we spending this money? Just because we've spent it for the last 20 years, do we still need to be doing it?
I, I'm not about zero-based budgeting someone to graduate school. Doesn't impress me much. You have to understand that, I take it, take that budgets that are in place right now are pretty good, because, I mean, there's a base to start with. But if every department had had to go through the iteration of what would you do if you had to cut 20%? You know what 20% least important it is. I wouldn't put up with, you know, I hate to say this, but, you know, working with a very strong superintendent in Westford, you know, if they ever have to make cuts, it's always the most popular thing, that parents are going to scream, and, yeah, we're going to have to cut sports, we're going to have to cut extracurricular activities. It's a game. It's disrespectful for the community to play.
The library would be seen as a sentence.
There you go.
Okay. It's just disrespectful. Now, people know that, you know, don't play the game. But each department has to make certain cuts, and which personnel would you eliminate if you had to? Whose hours would you reduce if you had to? I explained expenditure control budgeting, I'm not going to go through that detail right now, but the bottom line is, you know what resources you have available to you when you're preparing your budget, do it in the most respectful way possible. And if department heads don't do that, they're not doing their job.
Glenn, sometimes I walk in here, and I get called at home, and, you know, I see people in the street, and a lot of people unhappy with the attitudes in here. And what would you do as town manager to change it?
Attitudes in town hall?
Toward people in town, and selectmen, whatever. I'm talking about people that work in the town hall. Being rude.
My, my, my simple philosophy wherever I worked is always open door policy. Anyone wants to talk to me, they're more than welcome. I've never had, some town managers, I know, I followed one in Westford, they had a person that wouldn't let anybody pass the front door.
I'm not talking about town managers, I'm talking about workers, assistants, you know, people, say, somebody calls your office, gets the assistant, an assistant through to the person.
How would they do that?
It happens. You, you as town manager, will you correct that?
Yes. People who make the phone calls are the ones paying their salaries.
I agree.
Little things. When I was, my first full-time job after graduate school was as an administrative assistant for the county commissioners in Stratford County, Dover, New Hampshire. And what a crazy building that was, because you had registries of probate, registry of deeds, you had the county attorney's office, et cetera. And it was very disparate group. You also had to cross the street, you had the county nursing home, and the county jail. And so what I said, once a month, we're going to have meals at lunchtime, that every month, a different department brings in the lunch. And just a little thing like that went over fabulously. Where just, you know, you saw Skull and Cruz, many people would split their lunch, but just to get to know one another, that we're all on the same team. You know, I mean, we work for different departments, we're all on the same team, we're all working for the same. And the more you get to know somebody that you think you dislike, the more you realize that you have things in common. I can tell you that where I've worked, people are happy. And part of that is, you're walking around and letting them know that they're appreciated. And if they're doing something wrong, they need to know that, too.
That's good. We have about five minutes left. Any questions you want to ask of the board? Any questions you want to ask of the board? Or any words of wisdom you'd like to impress upon us?
Well, I, my nickname used to be the professor. I try to get away from that. Other than the advertisement that was on the newspaper, what are you looking for in your next town administrator? What kind of person are you looking for? I mean, I have to put you on the spot now, if you want to have this discussion, I want you to make your decision. But what are you looking for? And if there are concerns you may have about whether or not I fit that role, feel free to ask them.
I'll bet leadoff here on this one. Given nature of the way that the teams have been assembled over the years, you've got a bunch of disparate personality types and that kind of thing. And I think someone who is a consensus builder and who can get people to come to the table, you know, little things like capital planning, which is not a little thing, but it's a huge thing, but, I mean, as far as the time slice of your day-to-day job. Right? Getting people to come to the table, you know, be respectful to each other, understand each other's needs relative to the capital needs, those types of things. You know, I think keeping this board incredibly well-informed as to what's going on, you know, I don't think any of us are afraid of bad news. What upsets us are surprises.
Oh, the worst thing a board, your board can do is be surprised at any point in time.
Right. You know, and so from my perspective, you know, a key attribute I'm looking for is someone who is comfortable in such a hundred percent transparency, you know, and making sure that this board is aware of, you know, kind of those little storm clouds that are on the horizon that, you know, are going to start making lightning pretty soon. And we just want, you know, we're okay with bad news, we just want to be aware of it.
You never want, you don't ever want someone to come to you with an issue that you should know about, that other people do and you don't. I mean, that's, I mean, as an elected official, that is incredibly divisive, that if someone else knows something that you don't know. And that's why it's very important that any information you provide to one individual, you provide to all. So they all have the same information. And again, I also got to tell you, I appreciate your website. That says, any information that goes through this domain is considered public record, de facto. That's, a lot of communities don't have that on their website. A lot of communities don't even understand that.
Yeah, actually, our current town manager even has all the employees now in the footer to their emails, you know, the State Secretaries of Determined emails are public documents. It's a constant reminder so that, you know, where everyone's cognizant.
I'm looking for someone with large endowment.
That's, sorry, I need to work. Did you mean physical or financial?
No, I doubt it. Doubt, under the doubt, you know?
I guess you sort of hinted around it and it's sort of important oftentimes, the follow-through, the follow-up on issues that we might discuss. And, you know, we'd like to see you take notes and then follow through and perhaps at the next meeting, give us an update on...
Well, anything you discuss in one meeting is all business the next meeting.
Well, not always, not always. Because we all have our individual constituencies, some of which overlap and some of which don't. So we bring to the table, you know, different perspectives on what the community's expecting. You know, we don't all know a hundred percent of the community, but we get, you know, a good cross-section among the five of us. And some of it overlaps, some of it does not. And oftentimes, you know, you get the sense from people in the community, why on earth is this being done in town? And if we can't immediately answer, we expect the town manager to help with the answer for the community.
Very quickly, yep.
And there's oftentimes those that will take us to task, you know. I have asked three questions, my questions have not been answered yet.
Why can't I get answers to my questions? Earlier, I talked about how the relationship between the members of the board will be a good indicator of the relationship you have with the person sitting in the seat. I can also tell you that the performance that the person in the seat will have is largely based on the performance of the five of you. That if this person's going to succeed, the five of you need to succeed as a board. And it's, you're all in this together and it's shared responsibility, shared results. And my role would be to make every one of you look good. And part of that is responding to requests for information. Or can you find out this question for me, get it back to me? Making you look good makes me look good.
That was my comment about the phone calls, the personal visits to certain offices, being rude to people, you know, there's no need for that. That was where I was getting at.
Glenn, thank you so much for spending another hour with us. Ian, we still need to work through the overall timeline on this. You know, as initially posted, you know, the position was going to, you know, open up third week of February, you know, that may or may not be the date. So we're ways away from the backend of that, you know, not saying that anything changed in the interim as well, so.
You've been wonderfully keep informed so far.
And, you know, we'll maintain that ongoing dialogue and, you know, walk you through the rest of this process, okay?
Thank you.
Ken, thanks for coming in.
It's the first time I sneeze in about six months.
You can't do that these days.
Yeah, you do. I never cough, I sneeze.
First time you sneeze in six months, did you say?
Yeah, I know, I never do. I'm sorry? I can't hear you.
Our second candidate that we're meeting with this evening is Michael, not his last name, Slazek?
Slazek, yes.
Slazek, okay. From Ludlow. Like our first candidate, you know, the board did meet with Michael several weeks back and invited him, you know, to come back for a second round of interviews. The five of us obviously have met you and have gotten to know you a little bit, but although this is not being broadcast live, we don't have a live feed from this room, this will be running as soon as possible on public access. So why don't you just take three, four, or five minutes, introduce yourself to the town of Exbridge, you know, remind us why you're here, what you bring to the table, you're interested in this position.
All right, I'll take five minutes, I'm not that interested in accounting.
That's what I said, three to five.
As you said, my name's Mike Slazek, I'm just turned forty-six, I'm from Ludlow, I'm married, I have one child, she's a twelve-year-old daughter, going on thirty or something like that. And that's my, besides my work, that's my focus, my family. So I don't have a lot of other interests. My background is, I was a town administrator for about four-plus years in Ludlow. For a short time, I'm at another position and now I'm looking here. I am an attorney, I graduated the Boston University School of Law, and I'm also an MBA in Finance. So I think I bring some unique characteristics. I know a great deal about municipal law and I know a great deal about finance. And I think I'm an effective manager and I get along with my people.
Before we move on, are we okay as far as sound level? Is Michael loud enough? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay. The process we're going to follow tonight is kind of go through the hit parade here. Each of us will ask you a couple of questions and then open up a little bit more free-form, you know, question and answer after we answer the standard set of questions. Okay? So Peter, you want to bet leadoff again?
Thanks. Good evening. It's not unusual for communities to have a certain tension between the so-called general government, town side, and the school department, which was the case not too many years ago in Exbridge, although that situation has vastly improved. What's your experience in managing that inevitable tension? And what would you do or could you do to help maintain and put within the relationship we currently have?
I think that you're absolutely right, there is always tension at some level and it's good to hear that you have addressed that. When I started my position at Ludlow, the tension level was very high. It was us versus them within town hall. They always said, well, town and school. My position was, general government and school, we're all part of the same town. At the beginning, I had a school superintendent who was, I think, very much battle-scarred with that and was not very open to cooperating. Fortunately, he retired about a year into my tenure and it was a brand-new school superintendent. I was relatively new and we really worked together well. She was not very experienced in some areas. She had, her specialty had been special education, so she was really not experienced in certain areas of administration, particularly procurement and buildings. She actually came to me and asked me to help out. The school business manager was also new at the time. And we worked together on a school roof project that had been begun by the former superintendent. It was, I think, a one-point-six-million-dollar project. We did it, we started from scratch, we went back, we, he had been sort of bought into a certain roofing system. We said, no, we're going to start from scratch, we're going to look at all the systems. We did it for four-hundred thousand less than the budget. It was really a coup and we turned back money to the town and used that money to put in a local intranet that served both the town, the town side, the general government side buildings, and the school buildings. So it was a really good start to the working relationship with the school department and it carried through. This past year, there was some tension because of just a very large increase in the school personnel budget and that caused some tension. But when I left, we were on very good terms.
Was the increase in the budget due to the contract negotiation?
It was due to a contract. They were in the tail end of a three-year contract and it had been backloaded so that the final year resulted in a seven percent increase in the personnel cost for the school. And it kind of broke the budget. It was a tough year. And that somewhat soured the relationship, but I think it was still a reasonable and strong relationship.
Ken?
What problems do you anticipate making the transition to the position of town manager on Exbridge?
Well, I grew up in Ludlow, I knew everybody. I still know everybody whenever I'm in the supermarket. It takes me two hours because I'm talking to a million people. I don't know, I don't know anybody here except you five at this point. So it takes a long time to really learn the town, but that's whatever new county you go to, that takes some time. It certainly is something I will endeavor to do quickly. I try and be someone who's approachable and open and I really want to know and be a part of the community. And that's hard to just jump into.
So you think the biggest challenge is just figuring out who the players are and how we meet things together?
Well, that's always a challenge when you come to a new community. But certainly, the other challenge, and you all know this, but this is everywhere, is financial. I've looked at the budget very carefully and this is going to be the most difficult year of a series of difficult years. I can see that you actually reduced your overall budget last year, which is amazing in light of the fact that you had, what was it, twelve or thirteen percent increase in health insurance? That's a tremendous feat, but you're going to have to do it again and more this year with the anticipated decreases in state aid. The speaker says five to ten percent. Looking at your state aid figures, that translates anywhere from six-hundred to one-point-two million dollars. You're not going to see much of any new growth and your mandated two-and-a-half increases are only going to cover about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand of that. So you're looking at real decreases in dollars of anywhere from a hundred-and-fifty thousand to seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Now, I'm not privy to your union contracts, I don't know what mandated increases you have, but it's going to be a very difficult year financially.
Ready to sign up for that?
It's, it's not just here, it's everywhere. It's everywhere. It's a horrible year. I mean, there are some towns that are obviously going to weather much better. I mean, a town like Lexington, which has a hundred-and-twenty million dollars and gets seven, I think, nine million in state aid, you know, that's not going to really impact the town terribly though. At worst, they'll lose half a million to a million of that hundred-and-twenty million. That's easy for them to deal with, there's a lot that they can do. Not so much in a town like this. Two-and-a-half overrides, I don't think are an option. I looked at what your tax rate was last year, I saw it posted out here, you've had a substantial increase. And in tough economic times, people are not going to vote themselves a further tax increase. People are saying, we're tightening our belts, you need to do it too.
Yeah, thanks. How do you envision your relationship with the Board of Selectmen and how would you work with us in establishing priorities and moving forward with different issues?
Well, the Board of Selectmen are the policymaking board. A town manager or town administrator, as I've been in the past, is responsible for day-to-day administration. You need to set the course for the ship and it's my job to keep the engine room running and keep to the course you've set in a broad scope. I certainly want to have a board that's well-informed, that's approachable. I like to keep in contact and let them know what is going on. Typically, the chair is the point man, I like to keep in fairly regular contact with the chair. And in most cases, that's sufficient for the board, he will then, or she will then let the other board members know or ask me to copy them. Inevitably, there are times when there is dissent on the board and if particular board members want to be in regular contact with me, that I think is appropriate in those situations. It has always been my feeling that even though there's, there may be a chair, there may be sometimes very divided boards, I have to serve all five, not just one or two or three.
Bruce?
Michael, I don't know if you got a chance to read our charter or bylaws. Have you had a chance?
I have read parts of it.
Okay.
Certainly the part related to the town manager position.
Okay. Have you, had you any observations, care to make, care to talk about them, about the charter?
About the specifics? Let me see if I, I don't have it. See if I can find it.
Anything that jumped out at you?
Anything that jumped out at you?
Particularly well-done or particularly lacking?
No, it was, this, the powers and duties section are fairly typical. And there seem to be a few standardized ones that have been used in most of the cities and towns and I think this is, the powers and duties are substantially similar to the ones that I had in Ludlow. Surprised at how long the removal and suspension section was, that was as long as the powers and duties. I don't know if that's been a problem in the past.
No, no, it hasn't. But I was just wondering if you had anything that jumped out at you?
No, nothing in particular. No, nothing in particular. Nothing in particular. My-- yes.
Just, the Powers and Duties were very similar to your position in Ludlow, but there you were a town administrator. What here, you're a town manager.
Yes.
But your duty as the town administrator--
As town administrator in Ludlow and the town manager in Palmer have identical powers and duties, except for they cribbed ours and just added appointment powers. That is the main difference. Board of Selectmen in Ludlow appoints, but typically did it on my recommendation.
You saw in our charter that many of the appointments are actually made by the town manager and expert?
Yes.
Okay.
But I always consulted with Ludlow, and they typically would take my recommendations into consideration. And certainly, not knowing the players, at least initially, I would be looking for at least input from you, so I don't think it would be a terribly different process.
Okay. As a new town manager, you're going to inherit most of your team?
Yes.
You know, most of the organization will be in place already. Can you walk us through the process that you would go through and give us a sense for the timeframe to understand, you know, what you've inherited? You know, strengths, weaknesses, organizational strengths, weaknesses, that type of thing?
The timeframe would be pretty compressed, given the fact we're in the middle of the budget season. I would want to start meeting first collectively in a managers' meeting and then individually with members. First, to meet them and talk about their department operations, but then immediately to talk about budgets, too. I would not be inclined to make wholesale changes to fit what I've seen in the past. I think every town is different. I would need to learn and learn the strengths of the particular departments before I would make any recommendations or certainly make any changes. So initially, it would be a learning process for me. I need to meet these people. I need to see how these departments function. You know, there may be issues that will pop out to me that are perhaps not as obvious, having people live with them for years and years and years. And you see that in every town, but initially, it's not something-- I'm not the sort of person who's going to come in and say, "Everybody's going to do things my life from now on."
Peter?
Thanks. You mentioned strengths in the fiscal era. Of course, that's a major interest of the board as well. Can you give us some insight as to how the process, the budget process, works in the town of Harry?
In Ludlow, I can speak Ludlow. I've never gone through a process in the other town. We would typically distribute budget sheets in December to be turned in in late December or early January. I would then start-- well, before that, I would sit down with the Board of Selectmen and discuss projected revenues and see what we have available for funding, and we would set budget targets. This was a little bit-- took a little bit of finessing because some numbers simply weren't available there. The big one being insurance typically wasn't available. So I would look at our early projections of state aid. I would call the state reps office, state senators' office, and get their opinions and try and get some early projections on state aid. I would then look at our permitting and see, talk to our planner, see where they are as far as new growth, and sort of get a new growth figure that seemed reasonable. I tend to be conservative in the projections, and I've never gone high. I think there's a lot more problems with going high with revenue projections than going low. And once I had something I thought was reasonable, I would take it to the Board of Selectmen, and they would make a recommendation for a target, increase what was available for funds. I'd draft a budget memorandum, give that to the Board of Selectmen for their approval, and then I would distribute that with the budget worksheets. Actually, the accountant would send me the budget worksheets out. We'd get them back in usually January, sometimes mid-January, depending on the departments. The larger departments had a little more time. And we would see if they were within the targets, and then we would start meeting with each individual department, going over, "Why do you need it here? Why not here?" And then sometimes we'd actually recommend lines be increased, you know, in the police department. "Well, your maintenance has been this for the past three years, and you haven't been increasing it. We think you need more in here to cover your maintenance costs, but we think you don't need it here." And we would come up with a budget, and finally, we would-- the accountant and I would turn in a balanced budget to the Board of Selectmen, and then it would go to Finance Committee.
Is there some methodology you use when the available resources are less than the requests?
Yes. There are always less than requests.
And how do you-- what was your methodology?
Well, I mean, we would meet with the departments, and, you know, it was my budget. If I had to unilaterally decrease it, I would do that. And then say, you know, "You can go to the Finance Committee. They have the right to recommend a higher amount." And they usually did for, for example, the school department. You know, they'd always get-- no matter what the number was, I'd always ask for a little more, and they usually got part of it, so.
When the Finance Committee agreed to a budget request from a particular department that exceeded your recommendation, what was your reaction at town meeting?
Well, I don't know that it would be the same here. I mean, this is a town manager position. Typically, they had the responsibility of turning in a balanced budget, and if it was balanced, they knew that if they were increasing something, they had to decrease something else. I typically did not oppose it if it had been vetted through the Finance Committee.
And what did the Board of Selectmen do typically?
Typically, they would support the Finance Committee's budget. I can't recall instances in which I had turned the final budget in where there were substantial changes. There were some years in which this process was varied from-- they were somewhat contentious years politically and where the Board of Selectmen decided that they would take a more active hand in the budgetary process. There was dissension during that period. It was a-- it was a period that led up to a charter vote in Ludlow that ultimately was defeated, and we stayed with the same form of government. It was a tense time. There was unfortunately some grants added.
Remind us, did you have a finance director?
We did not.
Okay. So that was an effective role that you--
Yes.
You got a town accountant to handle the mechanics of the building, right? But as far as budgeting and--
That was my-- that was my job. I was a de facto finance director, as well as a de facto personnel director and other jobs.
Karen?
As being an inexperienced municipal manager and town administrator, I assume that you've been evaluated in the past through your position.
Mm-hmm.
What process should this Board of Selectmen use to evaluate your position if you're hired?
There's a number of different instruments out there. I don't know what you've been using in the past. If it-- the last time it was done in Ludlow, they asked me to give them a number of possible instruments to use. They chose one, modified it, and used that.
Could you talk about that a little bit, like what the format or what the process was? Was it a self-assessment and then Selectmen assessment, or was it--
The one they chose did not have a self-assessment component. It was on a number of different criteria, management style, finance and finance abilities. I can find it for you and get you a copy if you blush.
Well, yeah, I think what's important is that we have a tool that we all agree is going to be a fair, you know, way of gauging your performance.
There's many out there.
Yeah.
Some are longer, some are shorter, and they all, I think, in different ways test the same things.
Michael?
How would you describe your approach to labor management relations in municipalities where you're bored?
I try and have a very good relationship with the workers. However, union negotiations, I am very tough with. But I've, you know, they know that. The unions know that we're going to butt heads at the table, and we'll be friends afterwards. And I think-- how many unions do you have here?
300.
It's a safe way to go.
Ludlow is an entirely unionized town, except for department heads and police dispatchers. Every employee was a union employee and--
That's the journey of ours, aren't we?
Yeah, the police dispatchers have just unionized. So it's just managers that aren't unionized there. I was very-- because my philosophy is you've got to watch the pennies. I was a tough negotiator, but I had-- they know that, the unions know that I'm fair and honest when I negotiate. I went through two police contracts. The first police contract, we went to the JLMC, as we have Ludlow has, or had on every contract since the mid-'80s. Police never settled. The last contract that I negotiated was the first in more than 20 years that we actually settled at the table. You know, I was honest with our revenue projections, what the town could afford, and we came to an agreement that was, both sides agreed it was fair and affordable. I think you need to earn the respect of your unions in negotiations by being fair and honest, and, you know, my word is my word.
Could you tell me what your single biggest accomplishment was in Ludlow, and what was a single piece of unfinished business you left in Ludlow?
The single biggest accomplishment, unfortunately, is probably not something I could replicate here in the short term because of finances. That was a revitalization of our downtown entirely with state money. Our town, we had a traditional old downtown section. We were having declining businesses, vacancies. It was really on a downward spiral. We formed a committee. We-- state funding, certainly with the help of our state rep. It was a lot of money. We had to do it in four different phases over four years. Each year was about $1 million. Sign-of-façade program for the buildings, new sidewalks, street-level lighting, beautiful clock that we put up. It was a lot of effort, a lot of meetings, a lot of bid packages, just a lot of work to do, but it's something I can drive through every day and say, "Jeez, I'm proud of this." And it was finished before I left. Unfinished, the biggest thing that I left on the table and I've continued to talk with my successor about was our fire contract, because it was an important fire contract. Our fire department is probably going to go to 24-hour shifts, something I was opposed to, but apparently, when they've gone to the JLMC, no fire department has ever failed to get them. So we were trying to get other concessions, and I wanted to see what I could do to settle that contract before I left. It still hasn't settled. So that's something I didn't want to leave. Do you have 24's here?
I have one more after--
Yeah, we'll do that. Obviously, in addition to Board of Selectmen--
I'm sorry, he has to do a 10-4 hours here in the fire department?
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. I'm sorry. We just implemented that. This will be our first year kind of trying it, and, you know, I think even the fire department is, we're not quite sure what-- I mean, you know, we want to try it and offer some feedback after doing it, so.
I suppose I was at the same point, that we'll give it a try, but--
Yeah.
I was very concerned with our ambulance, that having people on shift that long would manning the ambulances.
And that was one of the concerns that we had as we took a look at that as well, is, you know, effectiveness of someone who has been on the job for a very long time like that, but--
But--
You know, we're going to try it, you know.
There's no real choice now from what I'm told. No town has successfully challenged it at the JLMC, so it's going to happen.
All right. The question I started asking was, in addition to the Board of Selectmen, School Committee, FINCOM, you know, there are a number of other committees that are going to be important to, you know, the day-to-day operation of the town or, you know, the direction different functions take. Under the charter, you'll make a lot of those appointments, and the Board of Selectmen make some of those appointments. But do you have any thoughts on how to increase volunteerism? You know, oftentimes, we'll have an opening for whatever, a commission or a committee, and it could sit open for once at a time, or we'll have one opening and one applicant. You know, and a lot of times, you know, not that we're not respectful and appreciative of the volunteerism, but, you know, it would be nice to have people, you know, a pool of resources to choose from for any given opening. You know, so any thoughts on how to improve volunteerism?
That's a very difficult thing. There are certain committees that people want to be on, and there's no shortage of volunteers for them. Finance Committee, because you're high-profile.
We have an opening now, actually, I guess.
It's always easy to--
But when you mention that, though, we are looking for--
We have a hard time pulling that.
Really?
Yeah.
Really? We have a waiting list, but we have a golf commission. There's a municipal golf course. There's always-- no shortage of people willing to--
That includes free greens fees, if you want--
No, no, it didn't actually, but it didn't. But, you know, there's a certain-- it's high-profile. Personnel Board was always murder to fill. Always very difficult to get people for Personnel Board. Even Conservation Commission, I always found difficult to fill because it's-- you can anger some people, and it is a lot of work. You've got to do a lot of site visits. I don't have an easy answer to make people more interested.
Those overworked ones, Karen?
You tend to get a certain amount of people who are interested and serve on sometimes multiple committees. I don't know if you allow that.
We do, and we do have a core pool of--
Yeah.
Volunteers who volunteer for quite a few things, you know. But those people, they get spread thin and burn out.
Certainly, I have not been above personally recruiting people for committees, but that's tougher for me to do here. I don't have the--
You do.
--number of people that I can draft.
Sure. But still, we get a silver bullet if I'm in on them.
Yeah, my best friend, I roped him in for the audit committee. His wife, I was on the ambulance abatement committee, and many times, that's what you have to do. You just have to buttonhole people and say, you know, "We could use your help here." In the short term, that's hard for me to do because I don't know anyone here.
Peter?
Thanks. Just a quick question on, you mentioned you had a municipal golf course.
Yes.
Was it-- how old, how long had it been in operation?
It's-- well, it's been a municipal course since the late '70s.
Is it profitable?
Less so than it used to be. I would not, under any circumstances, suggest building one. The town of Ludlow got it for a dollar.
Yeah.
It was the former Westover Air Force Base course. It's a beautiful course. It was a mature course when we received it at no cost, and we have simply had a-- we simply maintained it. But building a course right now, I think, is a financial disaster. But building a course right now, I think, is a financial disaster. If you look to South Hadley and their course, they have incurred a huge amount of debt and are not covering their costs. The revenue projections simply have not been borne out. Golf, ten years ago, was a growth industry. It is not anymore, and certainly under these economic conditions, is not. And to actually get the land, there's maybe state funds available, but that essentially ropes you in.
The first one I ever heard about was in Westbrook. Westbrook has a municipal golf course.
Yeah, Chicopee does.
Actually Quincy does.
Amherst has...
The President's course, you can see it from ninety-three. It's city-owned. Horrible course, but...
Westover is making it financially. It's not an issue, but certainly municipal courses are significant issues in a number of cities and towns. Cherry Hill and Amherst is losing money and is a very contentious issue.
Thanks. Can you, tell us about two or three structural changes you have made in communities you've worked at, either in organization or policy or personnel that had beneficial effects, or maybe sometimes didn't have beneficial effects?
As I said, I was an administrator in Ludlow, and it was not my job to make structural changes, and that was actually not something the selectmen typically did. That was something that was brought to town meeting. But if you mean in operational structures, the biggest, most important thing I think I did, I did very quickly when I got in there, is look at the health insurance and made changes in the way we implement health insurance. And that's something I think you need to do. Your costs are high and your increases have been...
And what did you do?
I, we had two providers, Health New England and Blue Cross Blue Shield, provided directly from Blue Cross. We actually consolidated and it required negotiations with all of the unions and went into the Maya Pool, and that's Blue Cross Blue Shield. All of the employees are happy with it, at least the insurance. I have no complaints about the insurance itself. There were a few people who had complaints about the formulary, which was somewhat different from Health New England, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, but that's not a bargainable issue anyway. They have the right to change that on their own. So it was something that saved the town four hundred thousand the first year and has continued. It was not a one-time saving. It's been a savings that's carried through four hundred plus each year. And over the following three years, we saw total increases of fourteen point eight percent. That's cumulative, not for one year. So that averaged less than five percent increase a year over the following three-year period. And as you know, that's well under the average for municipalities increases.
What portion does the town pay?
The town pays eighty-one percent.
Eighty-one?
And that was a result of a long-ago court case. When we first went to an HMO, the town was paying fifty percent, and unilaterally went to the HMO, the fire department sued, and the judge said, well, you're gonna pay an equivalent dollar amount, which turned out to be eighty-one percent, and it hasn't changed. When I had left, I had successfully negotiated with some of the unions to change the contribution rate. Well, one of the smaller unions was the first one to go. They went to seventy-five. That was the library technicians. And there were a number of other unions that had go-along provisions that said that they would go with whatever the school agreed to. So if there was reduction in the school's contribution, they would automatically enter that check. I was also working with insurance advisory to change our co-pays. We have five-dollar co-pays. We still have five-dollar co-pays, and that's, they're not even available outside of municipal government or... So I was looking to get them to fifteen. And actually, the chairman of the Insurance Advisory Commission, who's a teacher, was on board with it because I showed him mathematically, giving him examples of what our savings would be. Even at the nineteen percent that they were paying, they would have to make, have something like, for, I believe for an individual, they would have to visit the doctor six times, for a couple, twelve times, and for a family, eighteen times, before they ate up their savings from the premiums in additional co-pays. That's a lot of doctor visits.
What made you decide to apply for this position here in Exeter?
Well, I mean, this is what I do. This is the job I have and I've chosen to do. I love municipal government, and right now, I'm not working, so I'm looking at the open positions in town. Obviously, I've applied here and I've applied and grafted, and I consider Westboro, although there is a residency requirement there. So this is what I do.
How big is your budget at Ludlow?
Last year's, including enterprise funds, fifty-six million dollars. That didn't include some off-budget school spending, but in general, it's fifty-six million.
Including the school budget?
Including the school budget, yes.
Mike? The charter requires you to provide us with efficient, effective, and economical government. And I notice, as we try to rein more efficiencies and more effectiveness out of government, we tend to bump into the requirement to bargain with the union, which then throws out the economies that we're trying to seek. Do you see that as a zero-sum game? When the search for efficiencies and effectiveness, we have to throw out economies? Or is the way of getting all three as we're required to do?
Well, I know that it said that in your charter, but I think it's something I would wanna provide, even if it didn't say it in the charter. I think that goes without saying that you're gonna be efficient and effective and honest and a lot of things that weren't included in there. I don't think you have to throw out efficiencies. Yes, your, local government tends to be highly unionized, and that is difficult to deal with, but it is not impossible. Unions, unions can be dealt with. As I said, I am not, I'm not a pushover for negotiator. I'm not the sort of person who screams, but I don't move easily. When I go in, I have negotiation targets, what I feel to be equitable, and very rarely do I vary from them.
Bruce? This is a question that's not on the sheet or any sheet. In your opinion, who has the primary responsibility to manage street acceptances?
Who has the primary responsibility?
Right.
The Board of Selectmen is in charge of all property in the town. The warrant would have the street acceptances, they belong to the Board, the warrant belongs to the Board of Selectmen. That said, I believe the Board of Selectmen should always listen very carefully to the recommendations of the town engineer and certainly not ignore warnings of deficiencies in the street before putting them on the warrant. That tends to be an issue that is contentious in many towns, and Ludlow's particularly so because we have an elected Board of Public Works, and they tend to get their noses out of joint when the selectmen do put things on a warrant that they don't want, and they've done that in the past. But the selectmen have always looked at the issues, and when they have gone against the Board of Public Works recommendations, they've done it with, I think, good reasons and well-stated reasons. So in the short answer, it's your warrant. Ultimately, you're responsible for all public property. You're responsible for street acceptances, but it's a responsibility that requires that you look at the engineering data behind it.
I think what's prompted Bruce's question is, we've just had to deal with an issue of snow removal for...
On private ways?
Private ways.
Yes.
And the number of permutations is just mind-boggling as far as, you know, some have been laid out and accepted by town meeting but never, you know, transferred. Others, you know, have not gone through the acceptance process. Some cases, we release bonds, but, you know, they're not really accepted.
Well, typically, if there's been a development agreement, every development agreement I've seen requires you to plow the streets until the streets are accepted, and if that's been done, they should be plowed. If they've been formally accepted, they probably should be plowed, but if they're in development, they should not be. That's part of the development agreement.
Yeah, and there's a whole bunch of...
Older roads can be a problem.
Yeah, you know, and in some cases, we'd get developers who are defunct now, and yet the roads have not yet been accepted, so we're in a difficult situation there. So I'm sure that's part of the reason. What we're trying to avoid is any new streets hitting that list of, you know, private ways that people are looking to ask.
Well, you have to, that is by vote of this board, and there's this, without looking offhand, I don't remember the particular section of the MGL that permits you to...
And we've adopted that.
We've adopted it.
Yeah. But it's just a big issue, and what we're looking to do is make sure we increase the focus on, make sure that we don't end up in any more situation like this. We have a list of streets now that we're working on, and we want that list only to grow shorter and not longer than three times.
Well, certainly, if you're looking at new streets, there should be appropriate bonds.
Right.
And that's either, some towns I know have had some issues lately because they've taken lots in lieu of bonds, and the developer goes belly up. It's, right now with the economy, these lots are not worth...
Can't sell lots for much, right?
Yeah.
Good. All right, another question for you. Can you talk a little bit about your experience in the municipal bid/award process?
Yes, I was the chief procurement officer in Ludlow, and I'm well-versed in Massachusetts procurement law. I've taken the procurement training from the IG's office. I need to take some, to keep my certification up, I need to take some additional continuing ed courses, but I do have the certification. I'm very familiar with thirty-B, one forty-nine. Thirty, thirty-nine also, because we have an elected Board of Public Works with an independent superintendent, he did a little bit more of the road bidding than I did of the other things. He would prepare the road bid packages, but certainly, I reviewed them and now we've approved them. So I'm familiar with procurement.
And then just one more kind of related question. Experience in grant writing and...
A little bit, a little bit. We had, I worked with one particular police sergeant, is the town's grant writer, has been the town's grant writer for twenty years and actually teaches it at Western New England College. So I didn't do as much of that as I did procurement, but certainly, I would work with Paul, and many cases, we got substantial grants. Typically, though, if you're looking for something huge, for example, a grant for the East Street renovation project, we actually brought in a outside consultant who was paid out of the grant, and he had actually worked for the state on the other side. He really knew the ins and the outs. And to be competitive for CDVJ grants, you really gotta get somebody like that.
We've got about eight more minutes together here. Any other individual questions from the board, or we can certainly, like, ask some more questions for us, please?
Well, what do you see as the biggest economic challenge in the year? I've looked at your budget, and I see there's not a lot of fat there. You are looking at potential decreases in fundings. How do you think the town would best handle this? Are the employees willing to suspend raises, things like that? Do you have a workforce that's prepared to do that?
Well, we just recently, you know, settled a couple contracts. That's the good news. The bad news is that they were essentially retroactive contracts that are gonna be up in June. Okay? So, you know, we, you know, for example, the police had worked for two years without, two and a half years without a contract, so we just settled that, but it was retroactive now, you know, come June, where here we are again, negotiations. And we did get some concessions or, you know, kind of win-win concessions, you know, relative to co-pays, you know, the contribution, that kind of thing. So I think unions, and it actually started with the leadership, the management team, first stepped up the plate and said, you know what, we'll do seventy-five percent, seventy-five, twenty-five. Everybody was on the E twenty. And so we've been able to negotiate, you know, seventy-five percent with most of the unions, and for new employees, seventy-thirty. So through course of attrition and new hires, eventually, we'll get to seventy-thirty with, you know, that's kind of where we like to go with things. So I think people have been sensitive to the very tight constraints that the town's under. It's old adage that the Chinese character for risk and opportunity are the same, I guess. So here we are, you know, on a tight budget cycle, but we've also got several union contracts also need to be negotiated moving forward. You know, so there's risk and opportunity there. I would ask you to seize upon that.
Well, the last really difficult year, I don't know how many of you were here at the time of fiscal '04. I was in town administrator in Ludlow, but I was active in town government at the time. It was fiscal '04, and we were in dire straits at that time. And it was really quite heartening because virtually every union took a zero that year. It was really a great spirit of cooperation, and it got the town through that year.
Did they get twenty percent the next year? That was the backload of the contract, I think.
No, and there's, you know, some question that some of them feel it was never really made up, but it's been hard to make it up in the ensuing years. Certainly, the first thing I would be looking to is insurance, and I would be looking to cooperation from the unions to actually look at not a worst plan. Certainly, I would be looking at, for example, the Maya Plan, which is really top drawer insurance. It's Blue Cross Blue Shield, but when you get everybody in the same pool, you can get a better price. And that's what we did. And I know you have a divided risk pool. It's not a good thing.
Now, there is a thought, at least from the speaker, about increasing the authority of this board to make decisions relative to like the GIC, for example, which gives us an even bigger pool.
Yes.
Opposed to just the Maya.
The municipal unions are gonna fight that tooth and nail.
Of course they are.
And what do you give retirees for insurance? Is it the same package that you give current employees?
Yes, yeah, right, right.
Well, that wouldn't be a deterrent. I had some issues with the GIC in Ludlow because our retiree package is not as sweet as the employee package, and you have to give the same thing to both. We only pay fifty percent to retirees and insurance-only. Widows and widowers can participate in the town plan, but they've gotta pay a hundred percent. So we weren't giving a particularly sweet deal to the retirees, and I really wanted to know how much extra it would cost to bring them up because that's required by the GIC. Cooking company actually will do a survey for you for less than a thousand dollars. It'll get, it'll show you what you'll save. They've got it all computerized and they just plug the numbers in.
The difficulty we've experienced on a couple of occasions is the persistent opposition to moving retirees into Medicare, which would be helpful, cost-wise.
I had a very strange experience with that. It took me two years to do it, to adopt, what is it, section twenty-nine, is it? Twenty-eight or twenty-nine? I put it on the town meeting warrant the second year I was there in Ludlow, and it was an absolute firestorm. It was an hour of heated debate in town meeting, and finally, there was a... debate in town meeting, and finally, there was a roll call vote, and it was defeated, quite happily, so I put it on the next year, the annual town meeting, and it passed without debate on a voice vote, I couldn't figure it out, but I just said, thank you, thank you, thank you, and we have saved a lot of money.
Town meetings work that way sometimes.
Yes.
Relative to the financial outlook, other things that we're gonna need to deal with? Capital plan, you know, the current town manager is, of course, that I'm aware of, that is actually, you know, put the committee together that now collected all of our capital needs, and we're looking, you know, 30-plus million dollars worth of capital needs outside of the school, you know, and then, I mean, that's a huge challenge, the union negotiations are a challenge, rebuilding stabilization is gonna be a challenge, so, you know, it's a multi-problem.
A capital plan is very important, and I had one in Ludlow, I had half of one in Ludlow, because I think a capital plan is great, but a capital plan that just addresses the needs is only half the plan, and I had a five-year plan, it's tough to go much further than five years, but I was unable, because of finances, to get a fixed revenue stream to fund it, ideally, you should dedicate a por, you should dedicate some portion of your town revenues, depending on what's necessary, 2, 3, up to 5% for capital, and then try and, and I looked at your capital plan, and it's a good plan, but it does tend to go up and down from year to year, my goal was always to have approximately the same amount of capital spending each year, and have it be a fixed percentage, I could never get the dedicated funding, but I tried to, you try and level the stream so it's not up and down and up and down, and you have something you can afford, it's sort of like a car payment, you don't want that to go up and down every month.
Pay yourselves first, basically.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we're just about on the tone here, as far as process moving forward, you know, a hard stop, you know, right-to-left planning date is third week of February, I mean, that's the current town manager's contract runs through then, she's obviously actively interviewing as well for other opportunities, so this is gonna be fairly fluid, I would envision, you know, nothing else happening in this process until, probably until right after holidays.
Okay.
Which, I mean, which is not all that far away anyway, we're in a couple weeks away from that, you know, but probably, you know, first of the year, I'll be in contact with you, and if anything changes with your status, you're gonna get your interviewing at Craft and probably other locations as well.
I'll cancel the interviews if you.
Please keep me posted, though, if anything should change from your perspective, but, you know, I wanna personally thank you for your continued interest in Oxbridge, and for coming out tonight and spending another round with us, we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Certainly, if you'd send an offer up, suspend any other, any other jobs, sir.
Thank you. Beautiful floors in here. Nora? Thanks for coming by.
We should auction off that nice balance beam and weights.
Yeah, that is nice, huh?
Weights and measures, where'd it come from?
Every town has to check weights and measures, that's why we have a sealer of weights and measures, although this hasn't been used in years, we have a machine that they go to check the gas stations, you know, for gallons, and grab that out and keep it down there, or if the state does, they might.
to us from Adams, Mass, like the other two candidates that we met this evening, you go by Bill, aren't you?
Bill.
Bill met with the board about a week, week and a half, two weeks ago, as part of our initial screening process, and thought we wanted to bring him back as a finalist. Now, Bill, the five of us have met you already, this is not being broadcast live, we don't have live feed capability from lower town hall, just up in the selectmen's room, which is upper town hall, but this will be airing as soon as possible on public access, so if you'd like to take a few minutes, three, four, five minutes, kind of introduce yourself to the town of Oxbridge, tell us why you're here, why you're interested in this position, a little bit about your background, you know, and just as a refresher for us, but also an introduction to the town, we appreciate that.
Okay, fine, okay, my name's Bill Ketchum, as was just mentioned, I currently reside in Adams, Massachusetts, I was the town administrator there for four years, I have better than 25 years of experience in local government, I started out my career as a municipal attorney in the late 1970s, I worked as an assistant, eventually became a department head, and was asked at one point to fill in as the acting city manager of Newburgh, New York, I found that I liked managing and administering local government more than practicing local government law, so I consequently switched over, I've been working in, as a, either a manager or an administrator ever since, why Oxbridge? Obviously, Oxbridge is currently looking for a manager, and I am currently looking for a new position, my interest in the town is, it's a very similar community in many respects to Adams, and even in the, somewhat more distantly to Newburgh, where I worked for many years, Oxbridge at one time was an industrial mill town with a very strong agricultural element, that would aptly describe the town of Adams, which had been the home of the Berkshire Mills, Oxbridge was also the home of a textile district, changes in the American economy have necessitated the communities reinventing themselves, I worked on that in Adams, I worked on that back in Newburgh, which also had a mill history, although a much stronger retailing element, also as a center for surrounding agricultural areas, so my interest in Oxbridge is I think I have the skills, which I've picked up in other communities through my experience, which would be of great service here as well, and that I could be an assistance in moving the town forward.
The process moving forward tonight is, can I go back and forth asking a series of standard questions, and we want to ask the same questions to each of the candidates, so on some basis for comparison, but then, the latter part of the hour that we spend together will just be kind of more free-form, you know, depending on where the conversation has taken us over the course of the first 45 minutes or so, okay?
Okay.
So Peter's gonna lead off and ask a question.
Thanks. The Board of Selectmen, as you know, is the chief executive officer of the town, and as such, we are primarily concerned with the fiscal condition of the town and so forth. Can you discuss your fiscal planning skills, and how the budget process worked in the community that you've worked in?
I'd like to start off the budget process by sitting down with the board and getting the priorities set up for the current year, essentially, what does the board see as the priorities for the town which need to be met in the current budget, now, one aspect of that is bringing in a capital planning process, another aspect of that is the concerns that the board might have about what any spending will do to the tax rate, what any particular personnel needs might be, even the relative priority to be given to a variety of town services, is there anything that needs, you know, particular attention, so we start off with a meeting to sort of lay out the framework for a budget, we then go to the various departments, I start off with a general department head meeting, pass on to them the directions received from the board, get the input from each individual department, meet separately with all departments, get their budget proposals, make changes, perhaps have some additional meetings, then come to the Board of Selectmen, again with each department, reviewed in order before the board, this puts a budget together, I've noted the town charter here requires the manager to present a budget message, I did budget messages every year, I was the manager of Newburgh, where it was also not a requirement but a tradition, and I also implemented that in Adams, where there is a manager's budget letter that comes to the selectmen, and then we could proceed on, perhaps with some changes into the next level of the process, through the board, through the finance committee, recognizing all along the way that there's input and changes.
Mike?
What problems do you anticipate in making the transition to the position of town manager?
Most of this will be learning the town and learning the people, department heads, union officials, townspeople, board members, the other independent boards, such as the library trustees, that I would have to be working with, essentially getting to know, that always takes a bit of time, I've become fairly familiar with Massachusetts and the laws and procedures here, the town seems to have a good departmental organization as far as an organizational chart, in effect, the charter gives the manager a lot more authority over the departments, which in fact should be an easier job than Adams, where there were many departments that were pretty much totally independent of the administrator, so basically, it would be learning the town and learning the people.
Mike?
How would you see your relationship with the Board of Selectmen, and how would you plan to work with us in establishing priorities and carrying through on those priorities?
What I would hope is a series of meetings, informally structured at first, so I could hear the concerns of the board, and so that the several members of the board could as a group establish what the joint concerns, the concerns of the board are, I'm sure any group of five individuals, there might be a great variance in concerns, but in order to get it into the budget process, we have to make it the board's concerns, it would be very good if this could be done by consensus, sometimes there's not a total unanimous consensus, in which case, there is a majority, now, once that's done, I could come back with an outline to the board as to this is what I see, the outline of the budget, and then we would work ahead through that process.
Bruce?
Have you read a charter or bylaws, and if so, do you have any observations you can make about them?
Well, I did read through the town charter, I have not looked at all of the town bylaws, the charter creates a very centralized structure under the town manager, manager has a direct appointment of almost all departments, the major exception is of course the school, which is statutorily quite independent of the rest of the town, and the library, the board of health reports directly to the manager, which is, first time I will have dealt with that particular, I'm used to dealing with an elected board of health, I do diplomatically work with.
We just changed it at town meeting.
Changed at a town meeting, okay, well, I am used to your present one, because then, because that is what, that is what we had in Adams.
So as of town meeting, as soon as it gets accepted, you know, by.
It has to be put to a vote, I think, by the blackboards, right?
Right.
The, so, I, it's, I guess that's basically how I would, you know, outline it.
Just be careful not to be too critical of the charter, because he was on the charter commission years.
I'm very critical of the charter.
It's a charter that reminds me a great deal of the city charter I had, I worked under in Newburgh, which was a very centralized system of management, basically, the manager did every, in fact, under that charter, the manager actually could, you know, move money around in the budget, it was an amazing concentration of power on one individual, yours does concentrate power, you know, a lot more than many Massachusetts towns does.
There were a couple problems with it, but, oh, we got it.
So, as a potential new town manager of Oxbridge, you're gonna inherit much of the team, and you talked about, you know, getting to know them through the budget process, and also getting to know us, you know, partially through that process, but how will you go about assessing strengths and weaknesses, both, you know, of the organizational structure and of the individual players?
What I, what I like to do is, I do a, I do a monthly departmental meeting where I get all of the department heads to sit down, not only talk to me, but to talk to each other, I also visit departments, I don't like to just stay in the office, I go out and go to the wastewater plant, or the water plant, or the highway garage, and the library, and just see it and interact with the people, I've occasionally dealt with a number of the workers, and if you get to know them and talk, you could actually get some very good ideas from them, in many cases, the guy who's actually doing the job has some valuable input, and there has to be a rapport established, and people have to know they can come and talk to the manager, the learning of the strengths and weaknesses comes with learning the people, some people's strengths and weaknesses become very obvious quickly, some people are actually very good about concealing their weaknesses, so you don't find them out for quite a while, those are actually the harder ones to deal with, but I've, in my years, I've dealt with a great variety of department heads, I've had good ones, I've had deficient ones, and as deficiencies are identified, I talk to the people, and I try and get them to correct them, and I've had some success in that and some failures.
Peter?
Thanks, many times there is a tension between the school side and the town side, something that we have had in the recent past, in the last several years, we have a good working relationship, tell us a little of your experience in that aspect, and how you can continue the good relationship you currently enjoy.
In Adams, we had a regional school district, but the regional district only consisted of two towns, Adams and Chelmsford. of two towns, Adams and Cheshire, so it was, it was a regional district, but Adams was two-thirds of the region district. I had a very close working relationship with Superintendent Skraki. Mr. Skraki and I met during the budget process. In fact, so the school did keep me in the loop. It wasn't a matter of just having the committee adopt the budget and then in accordance with law it's set over. I got advanced, looked at it, and was able to give input to him on it, based upon my directions I received from the board. I served on the school's negotiating committee for one of their contracts. I also was on their building committee. They were starting a new school building project. We did have a couple of budgetary issues come up. I was able to get those resolved despite something of, there were some members of the public who wanted a crisis with the school. And I basically sat with the superintendent and settled the problem amicably for the town and for the school, got it resolved. That particular problem related to the school had actually overcharged the town due to a calculation error in a prior budget. We worked on a very nice arrangement where the town would get all of its money back over two years and resolve it without a big public brouhaha. I think I have fair diplomatic skills. I could sit, negotiate, hold the town's position, but still in a way where we don't poison the relationship. Maintaining a good relationship with the schools, and for that matter also with labor unions and other entities the town are dealing with constantly is very valuable. It has to be maintained while still not giving up the town's interests.
How does a two-town district work when it comes to voting on the budget? Each individual town voting on the...
Each town meeting must approve the budget.
Is it proportionally based on the number of students?
The monies were, the cost is apportioned first based upon the minimum contribution requirements of the state education department, and then in accordance with the last census of students.
What happens if one town meeting approves the regional budget and the other town doesn't appropriate the funds?
If one town meeting refuses to appropriate, their obligation then drops to only their minimum contribution. The contribution in excess of minimum of the other town must be decreased proportionally under the regional agreement based upon the student census. So if one town refused to appropriate anything over minimum, the other town could not be required to contribute over minimum even if their town meeting approved it. We had, did have the situation where one town actually reduced the school budget, refused to, I shouldn't say reduced the school budget, that's not proper, but refused to appropriate the full amount requested, but they did appropriate in excess of the minimum. Thus, even though the Adams meeting had appropriated the full request, it could not be required to pay over the full request. It automatically went down. And that was the vagaries of that particular regional school agreement. I understand they're all a little bit different.
You actually answered my question when you were talking about yourself, so I will, I'll throw it back to see if you want to elaborate anymore on it. Oh, I missed one question first, okay. You're an experienced municipal manager, and I assume that you have been evaluated by boards in the past. What process should the Board of Selectmen use to evaluate the town manager's performance?
The board should establish at the start, in consultation with the manager, what they wish to see accomplished with a reasonable time to accomplish. What are the goals? This is sort of in the way of also, you know, setting the priorities of the town. And then the board can evaluate how well the manager achieved those goals. Now, honestly, in my entire career, it's sometimes very difficult to get that clear set of goals. So how have I actually been evaluated? I've had some boards skip evaluations altogether. I have had boards basically use the same standard evaluation that's used for municipal employees, whatever was adopted, they go through it. Some of those actually give. I've had boards devise their own evaluation, and I've had boards come up with evaluations based upon very general categories of governmental service. Let's say, how well does the manager work with Public Works, Public Safety, and basically check some boxes. What is most helpful though for me would be sit down, discuss goals, and then how well were those goals met? What obvious goal would be a good communication with the board? What does the board see as good communication? And then after six months or so, if there's dissatisfaction, to bring that up and say, well, this isn't working, how could we make it better? Set up, this is what we're going to do to make it better, and then six months later say, have we really made it better?
You already touched on this briefly, but could you expand upon your approach to labor-management relations in the municipal setting, given that the next town manager that we bring on is going to have three contracts to negotiate right from the starting gate?
Okay, well, I'll start off by saying, when I was asked to be the acting city manager for the first time in Newburgh, I came in and out of three municipal contracts, only one was settled. So I had two not settled, one of which was with the police union. Police unions and fire unions and teachers' unions are probably the three toughest unions. My philosophy of labor relations is that the town has to establish an atmosphere that the town is being honest with the employees as to what the fiscal situation is and as to where the town is going to be going. If we want to sit down and we want to talk about health insurance, we have to be clear to them why we're talking about health insurance, what the problem really is, and it usually boils down to money to pay for it. But why is it a problem? Negotiations have to be approached with the philosophy that the only way there will be an agreement is if there is some benefit to both parties. And unfortunately, municipalities are not in a position in this day and age to be able to give the benefit to the other party by giving what was usually given in the past. And what we gave in the past was generous health insurance, generous days off, and to a much lesser extent, pay increases. So we have to approach problems with a way of, there's a mutual interest in solving the problem. Here's a way we can do it. Open communication with them, honesty with them, and I'm not saying it's easy. I sat down to negotiate a health insurance change with the Public Works Union, and their contract had been expired for six months before we finally came to an agreement. It is not a, it's not an easy thing to do, but I believe it's the way to go. It's really establishing a good relationship so that they know they can trust the person they're negotiating with to be upfront with them.
Six months, that's nothing. We just, that's a federal, it was two and a half years, so.
Bruce? Yes, can you tell me your single biggest accomplishment in your last position and your single biggest piece of unfinished business you had in your last assignment?
Well, in Adams, I think my biggest accomplishment is attracting to the downtown an outside investor who actually, he has done, he did development in Newburgh, New York, that's how I met him. I contacted him about a single building that was in downtown Adams. It had burned out in 1996, ten years later, still burned out. Town had tried working with mass development, very little had happened. Put out an RFP on the building, we got almost, I think, no expression of real interest. Worked with our community development director in Adams, put out another RFP, got this fellow to read it and get interested. He ended up not only acquiring that building, but acquiring a building in desperate need of some money next door to it, and despite my departure from Adams, he's still working there. He has acquired a third empty mill building for redevelopment, and is also working with the state to acquire a lease for the Bascom Lodge on top of Mount Greylock to restore that. His company has done, Polonia Corporation has done historic restorations all over the country. It was a matter of having met someone, someone else, get the, that's probably the biggest accomplishment, because there hadn't been outside money, I think, reinvested in the downtown of Adams since the textile factory had shut down. The thing that I'm kind of sorry I wasn't there to see accomplished in Adams, although we did get a bit of it started, was the completion of the town's master plan. We had just gone out for an RFP for master planning services in Adams. I had done master planning in Newburgh. I was kind of looking forward to getting into that there, because I thought we could really expand a downtown revival to the rest of the downtown, but unfortunately, it didn't work out.
Blanche, we should get an update, she'll spend a while. You remind me of something. In addition to the Board of Selectmen, School Committee, and Finance Committee, there are, you know, many volunteer committees and commissions, the majority of which are appointed by the town manager. There are still some that are appointed by the Board of Selectmen, the vast majority of appointments are made by the town manager. Do you have any thoughts on how to encourage volunteerism, get more people involved? You know, oftentimes we'll have a resignation from a committee and have either none or only one applicant for, you know, the opening. And although, you know, we certainly appreciate the volunteerism of anyone who steps forward, it's always nice to have, you know, a pool of candidates to pick from. So any thoughts or any experiences on increasing volunteerism?
Well, you have to seek people out. In, when I was in Newburgh, the manager did appoint, similar to what the system is here in Uxbridge, the manager appointed the planning board, the zoning board. The city there even had its own civil service commission, oddity of New York, but we had to, although that was a council appointment, we had to come up with appointees for that. I would, after I got to Newburgh, I had something of an advantage, because I was there for twenty-some years, I got to know everybody in place. But in something like Uxbridge, I would probably look to the selectmen and perhaps also to the people who are currently serving on the boards. And sometimes you have to actually reach out to people and say, well, would you be willing to get involved on boards? Some of this can be done as simple as going around, talking to community groups. If you've got a Lions Club, an Odom Club, or a Zonta Club, or any of the other civic clubs, or, you know, just get it out there. A number of communities have a volunteer interest sheet on their website, send it in if you're, sometimes you get somebody who, all of a sudden, this person would be ideal. In Adams, we, through that system, we found somebody for the conservation commission. All of a sudden, we had a fellow with an engineering degree who was interested.
Just, we do have a talent bank form, actually, that we do, you know, collect the information for volunteers. I was looking for your first answer, first part of the answer, which was, sometimes you need to reach out proactively, almost recruit for positions. I also like the idea about going out to some civic organizations as well, just telling people what you need, get them more aware.
If people don't know, and I, I looked at the Uxbridge census data, and I think there's, as of 2000, there's a good percentage of people in the town who didn't live in the town at that time, five years ago. So when you get that in a way, that's healthy, because you're probably getting some new talent in, but the other part of it is you also are probably getting people who haven't been involved here, and maybe don't think of being involved unless something can get out there to tell them this might be an opportunity.
Can you give us two or three examples of the way you've made structural organizational changes, even personnel or other aspects to bring a positive change to government?
Well, back when I was the city manager in Newburgh, I reorganized their economic development, community development, that had been an independent agency, not appointing, not reporting directly to the manager. It did appoint to the council, which kind of meant you had a staff person doing a critical part of the municipal planning functions who would orbit right around the manager and go to the, go to the council. And it's a system which worked fine when I had a development director who dealt with well. If you had a problem with the development director, created a great lack of communication. We had one point where we had, community development had its own housing rehab inspectors, and we had their, the rehab inspector would okay an installation, and the city's plumbing inspector would violate the installation for not meeting code. Now, that is not good communication. So eventually, and it took a long time, we convinced the city to change that, and we reorganized it and put that department directly under the manager, so there was a little better organizational system. In Adams, I wasn't able to get too much... In Adams, I wasn't able to get too much in the way of organizational changes. We did make some modifications in procedures, cash handling, and things of that nature, which was an answer to an audit criticism. We also made a few recommendations to change departmental organization, although the one recommendation that I did bring on that, the board chose not to approve.
So, as I understand it, your so-called development person was also associated with the code enforcement people?
That was not done in Newburgh. That is done in a number of communities. That code is under development. That was not the recommendation that I, wait, actually, in the case I just gave you, the development people were almost running a parallel code to the actual code, which invites arguments.
How did the development people actually do it?
They would have given grants that I particularly, they would give grants for housing rehabilitation through community development block grant funds, they'd inspect the work themselves, but their inspections were then being violated by the actual city inspectors.
So it wasn't business development per se, it was more related to?
Well, that was, they also did business development.
Successfully?
In some respects, yes. They did have some definite successes. I worked with one of the directors on the redevelopment of the Newburgh waterfront, which I mentioned in my resume, and that was extremely successful. Businesses were attracted, problems with the land titles were resolved, additional grant money was obtained and invested by the city in the street and the infrastructure, and an area that had been vacant was turned quite successfully into a tax-paying commercial area. And there certainly were some successes that way.
Just for clarification, when you say the business development at Newburgh, you make it sound like an office. Was it an office or was it one individual?
It was an office. The staff varied, but usually about four to five people.
And the population of Newburgh was only 25,000?
Like twice as many as Uxbridge, but they have a huge staff now.
Yes, and the, the city was fairly successful in receiving community development funds. One of the things, the New York system is, the city also operated its own industrial development agency and actually could earn fees from bonding operations on a number of projects.
Did you have county government in New York?
Yes, very active county government. For instance, in New York, we had no local board of health, the county had the board of health.
This is where you kind of touched on in your opening statements, and you care to elaborate. What made you decide to apply for this position here in Uxbridge?
I had a little familiarity with the area. My wifeless family in Rhode Island, and we've driven down Route 146 many times, so I knew where Uxbridge was. I also liked the similarities to the places I worked in the past. It's a community in transition from what had been a mill and agricultural economy to what is probably largely a commuter economy. I dealt with that in Adams. The mills are gone. In fact, the only real work, you know, there are still some industry in Adams. It has a large lime quarry, specialty minerals. You can't move a quarry, so that's still a major industry.
Have they outsourced to China yet?
What is odd is the company which is owned by some gigantic German conglomerate actually sold off its South American mines and concentrated operations in the United States. Probably their judgment of the political situation in whatever country they were in, but that seems to be a solid, solid industry. But it has the same sort of transition. I mean, Adams used to have a variety of mills. It had a paper mill, textile mills, printing mills, all gone. I did work with the owners of some of the buildings, looking for a reuse. I alluded to that with the developer I attracted, did eventually go ahead and actually acquire one of those buildings. The other similarity is the former agricultural heritage that I have worked with in Adams, where there still is some agriculture and some interest in preserving that and the open space. Adams still runs an annual agricultural fair, one of the few spots in Massachusetts that still does. And going back to Newburgh, same story, mills, find some reuse. Essentially, a point at which the community has to start rethinking and reinventing There's a lot of great similarities here. Keep the downtown, improve the downtown. The downtown is your sense of place. To bring it to here, in, you know, in Uxbridge, if you just stay on 146 and drive through here, you see highway development, very little else. You go to the downtowns, you see, there's a lot of character downtown. It's actually very nice. My last visit here, I actually, I stayed overnight, and I stopped for breakfast at one of the little places here. It was wonderful, it was packed with people. You have to kind of get, get people back to their center, to their downtown. That was one of the goals at Adams, and honestly, it was a goal at Adams long before I came to work there. It had been identified there a number of years before, but that was, again, something that I had tried to do at Newburgh. Get the center back, not only on the waterfront. You find what the key to the community is. In Newburgh, we found it, it was the river. In Adams, it's the mountain. I think I mentioned in my resume, they're the home of the highest point. Any place at Adams, and one of the interesting things, if you look at a house in Adams, the realtor will say, it's got a wonderful view of Mount Grey, you could see Mount Greylock from the whole town. And I'm sure in Uxbridge, I couldn't tell you what it is, maybe you could tell me what it is, but there is something in Uxbridge that's the key to it. You know, that would be that center, that thing of development. Maybe it's the Blackstone Valley. I know you're in the middle of the National Heritage Area, it goes through here. I don't, I don't know for sure, but that's the sort of work I've enjoyed. I enjoyed it at Newburgh, or I think we started to get the center of the downtown coming back. In Adams, I think we have started to get their downtown reviving. Your downtown actually has a lot going for it here. I don't know whether anybody's even seen a problem, but what I kind of see is, you have to be sure that Uxbridge shows that Uxbridge is down here, and it's not out there on the four-lane highway where people just go zipping pants. The businesses out there are important, highway businesses pay their taxes, they deserve services. The rural areas certainly are one of the attractions. I see it as a, as a place that kind of fits in with my career, and for that matter, sort of with my whole life. I grew up in Orange County, New York, but that was a, essentially, an agricultural farming community. My uncle farmed, that was next door to where my parents lived, helped get hay in in the summers. Well, if you went there now where the farm is, it was taken for an airport, and everything's turned into suburbs. Well, that's what you get when you're just 60 miles from New York City. There's, I'm sure that Uxbridge will change and grow its location between Rooster and Providence, not that far from Boston. I don't think you're on the Boston rail lines, but I know they're running the rail line to Providence. It'll change, and I'd like to help the board and the other people with what I've learned over the years to try and guide that, so you keep your center, you keep what's valuable.
Yeah, the next town manager is coming in on tour baseline, already there, it's already established. And one of the goals is to bring more efficiencies and effectiveness out of government, at the same time trying to find economies, places where we can save money. And sometimes when you try to suggest places to be more efficient, places to be more effective, it's considered a change in the work environment, and the unions then expect some other concessions which cause economies to go out the window. Any idea on how you can accomplish all three efficiencies, effectiveness, and economies of government?
The, you have to, I think, involve the unions in the process first by getting a good working relationship with them. Secondly, by demonstrating that fiscally, unless communities find more efficiencies and more economies, the only alternative may well be, given the economic situation and whatever might happen to the lottery aid monies down the line, that the only alternative that might come to communities is starting to cut back on the services. And I don't think either the town, or the town's people, or the unions want to start giving up a lot of these services, but I don't know what sort of a history here exists on override legislation, but it's, I know no one on the Adams board would even bring it to a vote, and the neighboring towns, a couple of them were successful, but many of them failed. And if there's no money, something will go. And again, it-
The entire history, we passed one override upon five years ago, we have it on two years ago, failed, not even come close. I think the general tenor of the town is, can be very override adverse moving forward, foreseeing the future.
I've seen you're very close to your levy limits. You know, you've got, like many towns, you've got a huge amount of capacity sitting there, but there's no way of getting to it. I think it's, you know, the way to deal with it is you have to, you have to work with, there probably are ways to increase efficiencies. What the unions are really worried about is the loss of union jobs. That has to be somehow worked into it.
Bruce, this is an opinion question, so, you know, it's not really right or wrong. Who do you think has the primary responsibility to manage a street acceptances?
I didn't notice anything in your charter governing acceptances of streets. Most places have a bylaw somewhere that sets out a procedure. Certainly, prior to the acceptance of any street, it would need a review by the appropriate departments to approve that the installed infrastructure meets town specifications. That generally involves sewer, water, drainage, and highway. And then, since it is the acceptance of ownership of something, there would be involvement not of the selectmen to place this on a town meeting warrant, and I think ultimately, a vote of the town meeting to say the town will take this. Some places have formalized it to say that, put an actual process before a town meeting can take a vote. We had one in Adams where a town meeting accepted a street, and it was, the acceptance was legally voided because there was a point of the process left out. And if you have the process, you know, laid out in a bylaw, it has to be followed, but generally, that's what I would put forth.
Part of what prompted Bruce's question is, we found ourselves in a difficult situation this year and in prior years, relative to providing snow removal for private ways, and the number of permutations of, like, what went wrong, so to speak, and how we end up in the situation we're in is countless. You know, developers who have gone defunct, or bonds have been released, but the roads never conveyed for one reason or another, to town meeting accepting it, but then the process not playing out and actually, you know, being conveyed, you know, any complication thereof. And our challenge, as a board and as a town, is to make sure that that list of streets only gets shorter moving forward, and that we keep any new streets from appearing on that list. So what we're really looking for, I think, is to solidify our processes that we follow as a town, relative to bonds, raising bonds, making sure all the improvements are made, et cetera, so we don't find ourselves in situations where, you know, homeowners find themselves living on a street that the developers defunct, that there's no money to finish road, and it's still a private way, those types of situations.
Yeah, I know, under the statute, the board of selectmen must approve plowing a private way.
Right.
As a town also would have had to have adopted that statute.
We have as a town, yeah.
One, I've seen the identical situations in Adams. It is an extremely difficult situation because very often, the homeowners have built expensive houses, in one case at Adams, they built expensive houses on what essentially is a dirt farm lane, and it's still a dirt farm lane, and they, it's private, they say to the town, well, can you fix it? And highways go across, but by the statute, I could spend $500 a year on private, that would pay for a few loads of gravel. And if you just put a few, you know, you look at what it would take to address some of these for a small area, and you hit a quarter of a million dollars, parcel that among three homeowners, if you spent it over 20 years, they wouldn't be able to pay for it. So it's very wise to tighten that up. How to deal with, you know, the mistakes of the past is very hard, because you don't want to say to the homeowner, well, we're not going to take care of this anymore. Plow it yourself.
That's a straight, we're sure. Just one more quick question, and then maybe if you have a quick question or two of us, they want me to wrap up. Just talk a little bit about your experience with procurement law in Massachusetts and also grant writing.
Okay, well, I've taken all of the state's courses. I am a certified procurement officer in Massachusetts. I have been doing this in my four years in Adams. I think I know the process. We have done, we've done designer selection for a library project, bids for a variety of projects, RFPs, which I mentioned for the building sale, and also some others, and requests for qualifications to bring in architects and some other issues. So I've done close to everything in it, and I don't know what else to say on that one. The grants.
Grant writing.
I haven't- I haven't written many grants myself. I did a couple of small ones in Adams. We did have a community development department that had a grant administrator, had a director who did grants. And similarly, in Newburgh, I mentioned the size of the department, they did a lot of them. I've done a few small grants myself. I'm certainly familiar with the process, but I can't say I've written a lot of grants.
I wanted to give you the details, that was an exceptional strength. Okay. Any quick questions for us? We have a couple minutes left here.
Well, what I'm curious about is how do your process work out timewise from tonight?
Well, the process moving forward is, our current town manager's contract runs through the third week of February. Obviously, she is, you know, looking and interviewing in other towns as well, but, you know, if we operate under the assumption that the position opens up, you know, the third week of February, we'd be looking, you know, I think, to wrap up this process by mid to late January. So, you know, we've not discussed this as a board yet, you know, beyond this evening, but I envision the next process would be shortly after the holidays are over. And we've not discussed the entire process. We have talked about perhaps doing site visits, clearly bringing finalists in to meet with the department heads, both to, you know, bidirectional interviews, really. You need to feel comfortable with department heads, they need to feel comfortable with you, to have a good, effective, synergistic relationship. And then, but, you know, we did talk about potentially doing site visits to, you know, private employers. Obviously, reference checks are part of the process as well. But, I mean, from timing perspective, you know, this is going to be pretty fluid. You know, with a hard end date of, you know, the third week of February, we'd like to have someone to see, you know. In a perfect world, I think we would not want to have a gap where we go the interim round.
Okay.
And not quite sure, you know, what other opportunities you're pursuing right now, but I certainly appreciate the courtesy of, if anything develops very quickly for you elsewhere, to keep us informed.
I would certainly let you know, as you're probably aware, I'm looking in other places as well. If any of those develop further, I will give you a call and let you know.
Okay. Appreciate it. Yeah, I appreciate you spending another hour with us.
Thank you for asking me.
Before too continued conversations.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for coming by. I'll treat you, Coach. That's it as far as official business for this evening. Just a motion to adjourn.
Promoted.
Okay. All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Republic here, it was July 10th, 95.
There was some red maple.
Yeah, red. I think some blueberries, if I remember right. Think some arachnids. I'm trying to remember. I've seen a lot of sites in the past three weeks, so, yeah, that one I didn't have any major problems with.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone like to make a motion?
A motion that we issue a certificate of compliance to the Fox River State's DEP number 312330.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's the same as 312-456, stone press two, not Gary Lane.
Again, another plant set I had to steal.
Yeah, we were just making missing sheets that show detail of the trench in the bottom of the base.
She can tell that one made it out to the field with me.
I'm sorry?
Oh, no, that's okay.
It stains on it?
Lucky it doesn't. Previously, stone press one came up to call this act. Stone press two is the continuation of the loop from what I have made out of the project.